Okay, welcome to our this morning and I'll call to order the May 6th regular meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners if everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And then after that, I'm going to have Sheriff Wilkie give our invocation.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation of America indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
This morning's prayer comes from First Thessalonians, Chapter 5, verses nine through 11. It was written by Paul to the new church in Thessalonia because they were experiencing great persecution for their new faith. Paul says this, "For God did not appoint us to suffer wrath, but to receive salvation through our Lord Jesus Christ. He died for us so that whether awake or asleep, we may live together with Him." Verse 11 says, "Therefore, encourage one another and build each other up, just as in fact you were doing." My prayer this morning, in the context of First Thessalonians, Chapter 5, is that we would continue to encourage one another regardless of the disagreements or the political discourse we see in and around us and perhaps even here in this building today. Please join me in prayer, you were invited to do so. Dear Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to come together even on this rainy day in a place marked by freedom, a place where voices and opinions matter, where we can share them freely without persecution. Lord, remind us to encourage one another even in our disagreements or the turmoil of the political process, particularly the ones we see nationally. Lord, have that encouragement protect us from being infiltrated by distaste and disruption and all the things that threaten the ability to share our voices with respect for one another. And Lord, it is my prayer that we are offered this in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Okay, our next order of business is a public hearing and this morning we do have a public hearing for funding under the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 to discuss the Community Development Block Grant Neighborhood Revitalization Program to expand emergency management services at the old, at the Clyde Armory. We have our community and economic development director, David Francis, to present that. Welcome, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Hope everybody's well today. So to open the public hearing, Haywood County is holding this public hearing to receive citizen input regarding a funding request to the North Carolina Department of Commerce. The public hearing is being held relative to the intention of the county to secure FY 2022 Community Development Block Grant funding under Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act to solicit input on local community development needs in relation to Community Development Block Grant or CDBG funding for this community. Each year, Community Development Block Grant provides a funding to local governments for hundreds of critically needed improvement projects throughout the state to assist with community development projects and serve low and moderate income persons. These community improvement projects are administered by Rural Development Vision under several grant categories. Types of programs funded include water and sewer infrastructure, economic development, disaster recovery, and neighborhood revitalization. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive citizen input as to the needs of low and moderate income residents and neighborhoods within the county. Based on the needs identified, the county may be eligible to apply for CDBG funds to address those needs. Should the county choose to request funding for CDBG funds during the 2324, a second public hearing will be held for this project specific application. As stated, the public hearing ad, the citizens will be given the opportunity to provide oral and written comment to, on the county, its county's past proposed use of CDBG funds at this public hearing. All interested citizens are encouraged to provide oral and written comments at the end of this public hearing. In addition, information needed, feel free to contact myself here at Haywood County Courthouse, 215 North Main Street, Waynesville, North Carolina, 28786. And please have those comments by May 15th. We will now open the floor to, for the public hearing. Mr. Chairman?
Would anyone care to address the board on this issue? This is not public comment, this is just this issue. Do you know when I'll close the public hearing?
With this, at the conclusion of this public hearing, I would like to request a second public hearing for Monday, May 20th at 5:30 for the acceptance of a grant award for Haywood County in the amount of $2,204,683 from Community Development Block Grant Neighborhood Revitalization for Emergency Management Service facilities located in Clyde, next to the Clyde Armory.
We need to vote to?
No.
You're just requesting that?
Requesting that public hearing. And then, and due to the timeline and getting the grant back to the state, we have to have that back before May 28th, I would respectfully request that you suspend the rules that we may be able to vote on acceptance of that grant after the public hearing on the 20th.
Okay, let me just, let me just say, it's anticipated that the Board of Commissioners will suspend the rules after the public hearing to vote on approval of the grant agreement and accept the awarded amount of $2,204,683 for an Emergency Management Service facilities. The suspension of rules is necessary to meet the grant agreement acceptance deadline of May 28, 2024. And that's basically reiterating what David said, so I just want to get that out there so that, so we'll, we will, I'll ask to do that at that time.
Yes, sir. I just want to make sure everybody understood as we go into it why we had to do that.
It's just a tight deadline.
Yeah, because we have a tight deadline we have to reach.
And our rules are basically to be transparent as much, as much as we can, and that's why we have those in place.
Yeah. I'd like to thank, you know, Mark Cathy and McGill for bird dogging this grant for us. That's a much-needed boost for our community and county. So thank you for what you do. Thank you.
Our next order of business, a public comment session. Would anyone care to address the board this morning during public comment? Don't see anyone, so I'll close the public comment period. We'll move to constituent concerns. There will be a public hearing regarding the budget on May 20th, 2024 during the regular meeting, Commissioners meeting at 5:30. The proposed budget being presented today will be posted to the county website, sent to the press, and made available in the office of the clerk in the main branch of the public library until the hearing for public inspection. Notice of the availability of proposed budget and a separate notice of the public hearing will be published in the legal section of the Mountaineer on Wednesday, May 8th, and will also be posted on the county website. And then also, I want to announce that there will be a special meeting prior to the regular meeting on May 20th to conduct interviews for the Haywood County Planning Board, and the time will be posted on the county website approximately one week before the special meeting. And of course, we have those interviews in the Commissioners' chambers right in the back, next to the County Manager's Office. There will be a, also, I want to remind everyone of the Haywood County Solid Waste Department will be holding a Spring Household Hazardous Waste Collection Event on Saturday, May 18th, so May 18th, from 9:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. at the Material Recoveries Facility located at 278 Recycle Road, Clyde. So if you have any hazardous waste that you've just been sitting on your shelves, which I do, you can pack it up, bring it down between 9:00 and 1:00, and you can get rid of that, those chemicals or whatever they are. Paint is something and pesticides, what else, Dave? Paints, pesticides, just, just things that are marked hazardous materials that you can't really put into the landfill, we can dispose of those, you can dispose of those properly if you bring, bring it in at that time. Does anyone else have a constituent concern this morning? At all? All right. Everybody's quiet, must not be awake. Yeah. Okay, well, the next order of business will be administrative agency reports and presentation. And our first will be the North Carolina Attorney General's Office Update on Departmental Priorities. And the North Carolina Department of Justice Senior Policy Advisor and Program Manager, Holly Jones, is here this morning to present. And I also want to say that Holly used to be a county commissioner, so she's, she's done what we, what we're doing.
Yeah, I've got a lot of nostalgia today, so, and it's so great to be with you all, Chairman and Commissioners, in this beautiful space. It's just, it's very inspiring and I have the opportunity to share a little bit about some specifics of the work of DOJ as it relates to, to your community here, so, here we go. So, as you all know, the DOJ is led by Attorney General Josh Stein for the last couple of years, and part of what we have been working on under his leadership is this transparency and accountability for what we're bringing back to local communities, which is what brings here, me here today. I know most of you all know what the Department of Justice mission is, but for, for a little review for other citizens watching in, it basically is boiled down into three different areas. One is to support law enforcement and to prevent crime, the other is to safeguard consumers, and then finally to defend the state, its people and their constitutional rights. And you'll kind of see each of these referenced in this presentation today. So let's just talk a few financial, I know Commissioners are always interested in numbers, if I, if I remember correctly. So particularly dollar numbers. So basically, since 2017, that funds returned to Haywood County and the citizens of Haywood County total about $11.5 million. Now, these include different revenue streams, include, including Medicaid recoupment, consumer wins for citizens, opioid settlement, and indeed, the opioid settlement is the largest chunk of this, of this money. And I don't need to remind you, but those monies will be, how those monies are used to address this devastating addiction and epidemic, it will be decided by your local community, so. Another big priority for our department has been the addressing the sexual assault kit backlog, and there were over 16,000 kits sitting on shelves across the state a few years back. And so I'm happy to report that now 99.9% of all these kits have been, that were eligible to be tested, have been tested. And we have a dashboard that you can go to and look at your county, and this is Haywood, Haywood County's highlighted number from our dashboard. And incidentally, the, the website is www.ncdoj-test-the-kits. And so Haywood County had about 47 kits that were eligible to be tested, and this, these were coming from Haywood County Sheriff, Canton PD, Maggie Valley PD, and Waynesville PD. So, great job, everybody, getting those kits together and submitting them. And out of those 47, 22 were entered into the CODIS DNA database, and then of those, there were seven that had matches. That means that there were already, that the offender was already in the, their DNA was already in the database. So I just want to reiterate that I get to work, one of my privileges in life is to work with this team in law enforcement, and if any law enforcement agency here in Haywood County would like support in reviewing these cold cases, because it's kind of this very specialized slice, we have a very seasoned, retired law enforcement agency personnel that helps, helps with this, this matter, and so we are, we stand ready to support Haywood County if these are reviewed and reopened. Another couple of data points for Haywood County as it relates to law enforcement, we're really lucky here in the western part of the state because we have the Western Crime Lab as well as the Western Justice Academy. And in the crime lab, we've had, for Haywood County, 3,782 pieces of evidence have been submitted and tested, and in terms of law enforcement certifications over those years, it's been about 315. And while there's also been some, our legal team has been hard at work for, for the citizens of North Carolina, and I wanted to just highlight a few statewide wins. One has to do with Juul, and North Carolina was the first state to hold Juul accountable in its role of youth vaping, which resulted in about a $40 million commitment to be used for teens and young people to quit vaping or prevent vaping. And as we know, teens are using e-cigarettes more than they're using regular cigarettes these days. Stats tell us that one in eight high schoolers are vaping and middle school use is just right behind it. So that was an important win. Also, we all know how annoying robo calls can be, and the DOJ has been very aggressive in this space, and we won a $14 million settlement for this, for Dish doing illegal robo calls in North Carolina, and the money that this $14 million is going to North Carolina public schools. And then finally, a win as it relates to the environment, and Duke Energy was, has to clean, had to clean, was told to have, they had to clean up their own coal ash problem, and this resulted in saving about $1.1 billion, because that's what it would have cost if North Carolina consumers had to chip in through their bills to pay for that. Some things that are underway that impact citizens here, first of all, the HCA issue, and as probably you all know, in December 2023, Attorney General Stein sued HCA Healthcare for failing to comply with the asset purchase agreement. It executed when it purchased Mission Health System in 2019. The suit alleges that HCA is not providing the quality consistent emergency and cancer care for Western North Carolinians that it committed to deliver. Also, in a very bipartisan effort, our Attorney General, along with 41 other Attorney Generals, are suing Meta, which is, who owns Instagram and Facebook for designing social media platforms that hook children and teenagers and deceiving the public by claiming that these platforms were safe and suitable for young users. And finally, Attorney General Josh Stein appealed the North Carolina Utilities Commission's decision to grant a rate increase to Duke Energy Carolinas, and if the North Carolina Supreme Court does not rule in favor, the commission's order would result in a net overall increase in the rates of approximately 15% for consumers, which translates to about $20 per month. So that's some of the legal efforts. Finally, just a few opportunities that I wanted to advertise, to work with DOJ for local communities, if you're interested into working with us, particularly in the criminal justice space. One has to do with the lethality assessment program, and that's a domestic violence homicide prevention program where the first responders work with DV service providers and do a screening through, when they, when they receive the 911 call and they go to the home, they identify the, the victim, and there's 11 questions that are asked, and based on the answers that the person is connected immediately to the DV service provider in the community. We would love to work with any Haywood County effort that might be interested in that. I probably don't need to tell y'all about the, how difficult it is to recruit and retain law enforcement agency, agents. So we have a Criminal Justice Fellows Program, so basically this is an effort to recruit high school graduates to come into the criminal justice system, and in essence, it's a, it's an educational forgivable loan if you commit to serving in a criminal justice capacity. And then finally, we have a lot of educational outreach to the public, yours truly included. So in terms of educating groups around frauds and scams and internet safety, we do a lot of that. In the West, that's a lot of me, and also there's a webinar series on protecting our youth, and we've been doing a town hall series as it relates to social media. Finally, a few final tidbits around the interface with DOJ in Haywood County. There's been four Dogwood Awards to Haywood County leaders, including Mayor Zeb Smathers, former Chief Bill Hollingshead, Judge Brad Lett, and District Attorney Ashley Welch. The Haywood County received an environmental grant for about $150,000 to acquire some acreage by the French Broad River for a public park. And, and then finally, we just know you understand that we are, want to be your partner as your community continues to respond to the, the closing of Pactive Evergreen, and we stand in the ready to, to support you in, in whatever way is, is you find, you find appropriate. So the last two slides are just all contact information about all our different divisions, and I can't tell you thank you enough for allowing me to share this, how this data from Haywood County intersects with y'all, and I appreciate the opportunity to, to be here today.
Holly, I was wondering, on the CODIS database that you mentioned, so you said that, that I guess the DNA was turned into the, to that department. So does that, is that a national database? I guess I'm not real sure about that.
Yes.
I've watched programs where it's like their DNA is, is out there, but there's not a cohesive, so that's more of a cohesive database that, that's kind of a one-stop-shop, if you will.
Yes, it's a national database, and there's all these layers of checks, like there's, our, our state crime lab is very involved in, in confirming the right markers before it's loaded. We, we at the state crime lab actually are the ones that load it into the, the federal database, but once that's there, you know, if there's, it could match with somebody that committed a crime in California or Texas and whatnot, and that's where some of these, you know, serial, and, and sexual assault we know is a serial crime. There's, it's very rare that an offender just, you know, commits that crime one time. So this is even, it's always important, the CODIS connections, but this is really important, particularly in this, this space. Is that helpful?
Yeah, 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 it is. And then on the Pactive Evergreen, yeah, we, we want you to hold their feet to the fire, especially on any environmental regulation that they may, that may need to be enforced because.
Absolutely.
That's probably the biggest question mark we have is what's in the ground and what's under the ground, and we can't test for exactly everything, and if something does pop up, we want to be able to, to call on you guys to make sure that they do what's right.
100%, 100%, so I'll definitely report back immediately, underline, highlight, exclamation point, so, but.
Okay, all right. Anybody else have any questions for Holly?
No, thank you for coming. I have had the opportunity to tour the Western Crime Lab, and that is an amazing facility. I said I felt like the, what was the little girl on Scooby Doo that was always into the crime lab? What was her name?
Theoma.
Theoma, that's who I felt like I was just in awe of everything they had out there.
It is, it really is a little jewel that we have up here, and then, and we're, we benefit, but, but our stuff gets turned around a little bit faster with the proximity too, so I'm so glad you, and if others are interested in a tour, we can, we can make that happen too.
Definitely a great place. Okay, thank you.
How many crime labs are there? Is there just?
There's just the, there's just the two. I think there might be a, a third one in the, in the, in the making, but there's the one in Raleigh and here, so.
Oh, okay. So there is, there was a huge backlog then on that. And I could see.
Yeah.
If I was a, was a victim or a, a member of the victim's family, I would want justice as soon as I could, and that, the DNA basically, when you were sitting there talking about that, I remember the, there was a fellow that had, I think raped and murdered a Clemson University student, I believe that's where, where it was, but they found him through DNA, and he was in another state, and I thought that would have never, case would have never been solved without DNA.
Yeah, you know, that's right, and, and here's like, it, it's, it's horrible that, it's horrible that all these kits were not tested. The only, the only potential light in that is that over the course of those decades, and some of them are decades old, the technology has improved so much that now there's, there, it is just able to detect smaller amounts and better. So that's the only little bit of upside in, in all that, but yeah, it, we, we've come a long, long way in that regard.
Right. And then, so today, let's say that somebody submits, say that there's a rape or a crime committed, that DNA evidence just needs to be used, how long does it take, once that's submitted to your lab, how, what's the backlog? Do you know?
Yeah, that's, and that's something that we're still working on, because, because one of the great things that happened in the course of all this is that the law was changed because it used to be that it was very subjective from law enforcement agency, because all those 16,000 kits were on 500-plus shelves across the state. So then they had, so we had to gather them and have them submitted. So the law changed, and it was called, it was a very bipartisan effort called the Survivor Act, and that required that you, that the kit, all kits are submitted. So with that new law, the, the uptick in submissions was like four times. So our lab has been adjusting to that, you know, going four times as much, and we're trying to hire people. So I would say, right now, they say it's about, it's still, we still are working on it, but it's closer to 12 months, so. But if there's an, if there's immediate rush, that we, they, they rush it through, if there's something like that. So, so, but we're, we're slowly getting it down and trying to get more scientists from the, you know, assigned from the General Assembly so we can make that turnaround. But there's, there's different, I've learned, I've learned a lot too, I'm a little Thelma-esque, and because there's all these different, it's not just one test that's done on it, it's a, it's a battery of tests to, to get the full picture. So it is, it, the test itself is just time-consuming because of the different markers.
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay. I guess it's, yeah, I guess you just don't get the result.
It's more than you probably wanted.
No, I didn't realize it was that complicated, so that's good. That's good to know.
I apologize if I got too much in the weeds, but.
Yeah, that's okay. Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions? Well, thank you, Holly, for coming out this morning.
Thank you so much. Have a great meeting and thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next will be, our next agency report will be the Haywood County Extension Update, and we have our County Extension Director, Sally Dixon. Welcome, Sally. Now Sally, you took Bill Skelton's place, right? Okay. I'll try to, everybody to kind of have a, a face with what, what it used to be and what it is now, so, welcome.
Just making sure. Last time I did this presentation, it didn't have slides in front of me, I left out somebody on my staff, so I try to make sure they're right in front of my face now. Good morning, everybody. I know that we've got a lot of conversations that are happening about agriculture and what we're doing as a county to ensure our agricultural future, so allow me to make sure everybody knows what we're doing with extension and the faces behind who's doing what. So the, the bare minimum thing that extension does is that we grow North Carolina. We provide research-based information from two land-grant universities, and we, we pipeline that to our community, right? We, we build community leaders, we make sure people have the knowledge to make their lives better. So we, we generate a lot of economic benefit, is the way they, they like to say it. We have a 27-to-1 return on investment. They did an economic development study across the state on extensions, return on investment. So for every dollar that comes in, we have $27 of benefit. I think that's a, it's a lot of money when you look at it. But what I like to do in this is I like to put a face with a name, so my staff aren't here, they'll be fine. All of their pictures are on here, because I want everyone to know who does all of the work in our agency.
Very good.
So I put mine first, because you either got to go first or last, and so it's easier sometimes to go first. But I direct the office, and I have a program area that encompasses community development and agriculture in a very interesting dynamic, so that works a lot with local farms, works a lot with local food systems. Some examples of those programs include our Visit NC Farms app, so that's a free app that, that we fund through, through county funds, that allows farms to be able to be listed in an app, so anyone can download that app and they can find somewhere to buy fresh produce, somewhere to visit, a local farmer's market, anywhere in the state and here in Haywood County. We've got a grower buyer meeting coming up to try to get more, more farms and more restaurants and food trucks to be friends, right? That's a, instead of you having to go to 20 different places to try to sell stuff, you'll be able to do that in one room. We work with our grower certificates, so if you sell at a farmer's market in Haywood County, at some point I have to come visit your farm if you're in the county. Just, just to one, it's a service to our farmer's markets to make sure people are growing what they say they're growing, but it's more of a service to the farmer, because we have a lot of people who have, who have started farming who don't know who extension is. They don't know where to get a farm number. They don't know what the Ag Center does. They don't know where to get a farm number. They don't know what the Ag Center does. So it allows us to go and kind of touch base with some of our producers that might not be as familiar with what we do. And we're also doing donation stations this summer at both farmer's markets, to try to get community engagement and donating produce to some of our, our agencies like Pathways or Haywood Christian Ministries. And we are, Extension has a, a new grant program, Empowering Mountain Food Systems, it's on its second iteration. So it had a run-through from nineteen to twenty-two and it's back. And that, that grant program is gonna allow for us to do much better business development, because we've got expanded capacity to do that. We'll have an area specialized agent for agribusiness for this part of the state. And a part of that grant, which has some ARC funding and some other things, works regionally with about twenty, twenty or so counties to have grants for infrastructure and support systems for producers. This is our horticulture agent, Rachel Douglas. She does a lot of things. So she does consumer and commercial horticulture. And so that's, that's all of the plants. If you have one in your backyard, if you have one in your field, it's the, it's the whole thing. She handles our Master Gardener Program. They, they've volunteered over seven thousand hours last year. When you do full-time employee, like math for a grant, you know, it's about twenty forty, two thousand forty hours a year for a full-time employee. So that's over three full-time employees that we have with volunteer hours through our Master Gardener Program. It's about a quarter million dollars when you do the federal volunteer per hour amount of money. She also handles our pesticide coordinating, so if you want to use restricted-use pesticides and you need a license, she handles the educational classes so that you don't have to take the test and so you're learning something. Most of the time, those pesticide classes teach you to not apply as many pesticides, which saves you money and saves you time. She also provides a lot of technical assistance for producers. And, every other year, the NCDAs comes into this pesticide disposal. I love when the county does it too, because about two days after we have an event, we start getting calls again asking what the next one is. And no matter how many postcards we send out, no matter how many times we put it in the mountaineer, there's somebody that doesn't get the news. So the more often we do that, the, the better off it is. And she also helps with soil testing for homeowners and, and for farmers. So, we're fortunate to live in a state where soil testing is inexpensive. There are some states that front the entire cost onto you and it'll be anywhere from twenty-five to eighty dollars to get a soil test. We're lucky to live in North Carolina where you just have to ship the box to Raleigh for half the year and pay four dollars a sample for the other half of the year. This is our livestock agent, Kyle Joe Farmer. She handles livestock and forage crops. So, within that, she does a lot of technical assistance. If you call, email her, find her, find her in Ingles. You know, try to, try to be conscious of that sometimes, but she, she provides a lot of questions and answers those. She does bull breeding soundness exams twice a year. That, that's a, a good, if you don't have a good bull in your herd, you're, you're kind of a, not gonna do very well. So that's a great service. It's a really low-cost service, about sixty-five bucks, and you get a whole lot of testing for that. She does educational programs with the WNC Beef Commission. Every month, they meet up at the Stockyard. And other educational workshops for, for livestock producers. So if you're wanting to do small roommate work, sheeps and goats, if you're wanting to get into backyard poultry, if you want to know what the laws are in being able to sell chicken, we've got all of that information. She also handles soil testing for forages. So if there's an issue in some kind of a pasture, if she can't answer it, we've got a lot of friends. We can figure out what that weed is, we can figure out how to turn a pasture over for something else. This is Julie Sawyer. She handles a lot of different things. So we handle the nutrition and cooking and the food safety piece. Looks really, it looks different depending on what, what end of the food spectrum you're on. So if you're on the end of the spectrum where you're cooking food, she provides programs to make sure people are cooking food safely. Most foodborne illnesses happen in your own kitchen, just from, just from not knowing different food safety things or unthawing meat in hot water in the sink, which you're not supposed to do. I have learned that in my time with Extension. So that is not a good habit. But she handles technical assistance. So if you're canning and you've got the canner on the stove, you need help, you can call her. But she also handles a lot of things when we deal with restaurants and food trucks and people who are cooking food and serving it to other people. So we do Safe Plates, Food Manager certifications. If you've heard of Serve Safe, it's, it's the same thing, it's just NC State's branded program. She handles, if you've got a question with how to do value-added foods, can you cook, can you bake bread in your kitchen and sell it, like legally, can you do that? She can get you the information to kind of deduce what the, what the laws and best practices are with that. And the, kind of the bigger thing that she does with a lot of her programs is works with the community to eat more local foods. Right, because we, the more people that eat vegetables and fruits and meats that are grown in Haywood County, the better off we all are. Because then there's a demand for that market. And she also works with little kids sometimes too, so she does pre-K classes on a, and they're really sweet, they're cute. You know, if you get a four-year-old to get interested in growing food, that's a, it's a very valuable thing. This is our 4-H agent, Leah Jorgensen. She handles all of our youth development kind of piece. And that's really important, because we need citizen leaders for ten years from now, twenty years from now. And making sure that we've got a community that is resilient and can handle whatever comes at it, starts with having really great experiences for our young people. I always put our admin in here, because one of the best things about being in Haywood County is that we have a human being that, that answers the phone when you call our office, right? So, if you call, someone's gonna answer the phone and help you. You're not gonna get frustrated having to go through a punch too for so-and-so. Unless you call after five and get our voicemail, and then that, that is the situation. But she's fantastic. She handles our finances. Thank God for Karen. Christian knows. Thank God for Karen. She handles all of our finances and keeps everything running smoothly so that we can do our best work, right? One of the other big benefits about what we have in our office is that we have area specialized agents that are based here in Haywood County. It's a really great investment, because we don't pay any salary or materials or travel fees at all for those folks. And we already pay the overhead on the building, so we just, we let them, we let them work in the building. So it's basically a free cost to the county, but when they're based here, they might have thirty-three counties that they work in, but this is their home county. So, you get a little bit better exposure to those folks. So the aquaculture agent handles trout, carp, anything, if you want to farm fish and, and do it, we've got a lot of trout farms here though. He's here in Haywood County. And then our last horticulture agent got promoted to be the greenhouse and nursery production area agent. So we kept him. And, so we've got, we've got two ASAs here in the county. And that really builds Extension's network, right? I might not know the answer to every question you throw at me, but I've got an area agent that I can ask, or I've got a specialist in Raleigh that we can call. Like, if we don't know the answer, we'll find it. We've got a lot of friends and so we can bring in all of these things that, one, help with agriculture and two, help with community development as well. We've got a lot of people who have programs and stuff that can really help our county. So, I think the, the biggest thing here that we've got to look at is that we, we've got a tremendous opportunity to make sure that in the future, we're eating local food and growing local food here in Haywood County, right? Because we know the best food grows here. And so we, we've got a lot of support systems in place. And we've got a huge, we're kind of on the precipice of, of where do we go from here and where do we make sure that in fifteen years you can still eat a cheeseburger with, with beef from Haywood County and, and lettuce that was grown here? And so I think, you know, this is the biggest thing we do with Extension, is we make sure that our community is, is healthy. Not just from the food that they eat, but from the, from the leadership skills that they learn as well.
Anybody have any questions?
Just a comment, Sally, thank you for the presentation. I think you've got a great staff. I will comment on the 4-H program, Leah Jurgensen. I think that's, that's really huge. You know, the future's in our youth, getting our youth involved in, in, in various aspects of, of society. You know, not just farming, but everything. And so the emphasis there with the 4-H. I, I know there's been a, been a need there and to, to really promote that program and, and get that thing rolling at a hundred percent capacity. So I'm glad to see that effort there. And Kyle Joe, working with livestock, I know our local high school's been involved with some competitions here lately. I made a comment, I think the last meeting, our Pisgah FFA finished third in the state, in the state competition on April thirtieth. And I think that was a, that was a huge accomplishment for that team that hadn't been participating in that kind of competition very long. I think the team that won the state competition had been together for several years. So, you know, again, appreciate the presentation and appreciate the, all the work that you guys do.
Appreciate you. And Tuscula got fourth in that cattle handling competition. So Haywood County really, really brought it home in that competition. I think there were about fourteen teams. So, you know, that's a, that's a great thing, that we've got young people that are able to have that opportunity.
But they've got goals for next year, I understand, both of them, so.
Thanks for coming today Sally. It was, your, your whole department is fun to work with and it's good to see the energy and enthusiasm. And I, I know when Chance was in, involved in school programs and things related to agriculture, just how much I learned as a parent. So I appreciate what you do. It's always fun to get to work with y'all.
We appreciate it. Any other questions?
Question, just a, a thank you as well. Thank you for your support that you give to our farmers. I know that a lot of people don't realize it, but without our farmers, we can't eat. And, and I like to eat. So, I, I appreciate the support that you give, appreciate the presentation and, like I said, all the support that you give, so.
We all like to eat and, and wear clothes, so agriculture's critically important for that. Well, thank you.
Thank you Sally, appreciate you coming out today. Okay, the next item is campaign kickoff for Raccoon Creek Bike Park. And we have the Community and Economic Development Director David Francis and our Recreation Director Ellie Flag this morning.
Good morning. I've come up here to give some proper introductions to Ellie, but also to, you know, this is a kickoff day. You know, we hear about, there's several items on here about the bike park. And it's been, you know, when you work in it every day and you finally see, you know, the beginning of, of a project. And we started this project, you know, nearly two years ago. And now it is, is coming to fruition. So it, it's exciting to, you know, as you'll learn, exciting how this project's going to impact Haywood County in, in a big way. So I do, Ellie came to us to work in February. Ellie grew up in, in North Georgia. She's an avid outdoor enthusiast and hiker. She went to Clemson University where she played rugby. So be careful, like we, we all, you know, make sure we don't get her mad, because we know that she can take a swing at us anytime and knock us down. So, and then after she went to Clemson University, she went and worked in Alaska. And then she was the Recreation Director in, in Craig, Alaska, up there. So we feel fortunate that, that, you know, you know Ellie came here with us. And I said, oh, she's only been here ninety days and it's been, you know, her feet's been on fire and her hair as well too. But, you know, as, as you know, as a lot of times in local government is, you know, trials by fire. But, yeah, Ellie, thank you.
Thank you so much for those kind words, David. So this is my first time being up here. Does this, is this volume okay? Am I too close? Okay. Well, good morning to you all. Thank you so much for letting me be here today. And I'm so honored to be standing in front of you guys in such a beautiful room. The first time I walked in here, I literally gasped, it was so beautiful. And this area is where I found a home in the mountains on many occasions growing up. I love being immersed in nature and helping others to experience and enjoy these recreational offerings is my passion. I'm so thankful to be involved in such amazing projects in the coming months and years. And there's just so much room for growth in this department and I'm so excited to dedicate my energy to doing so. Today I'll be giving some updates about our future bike park. I'm guessing this is how you move that thing. So the idea for a bike park in Haywood County, it came before the Recreation Master Plan. David Francis and the previous director had discussions about how to bring an exciting new activity to the area. And when eventually the county decided to switch the recreational focus to non-traditional activities, the idea for a bike park was something that would fit in line perfectly with the new way of doing things. The county recognized the importance of planning as a means to improving recreational access to all of its residents. And in doing so, the county contracted with McGill and Associates to create a recreational master plan to go about growth in a responsible manner. Throughout the development of the master plan, community surveys, public workshops and meetings were used to simulate conversations about recreation in our area. Public input is one of the most important aspects of the planning process for expansion of future facilities. These conversations and surveys showed a clear desire for a more natural, for more natural service trails, bike amenities, open spaces and nature-based organization within Haywood County. The Recreation Master Plan delivered a way to show the need for these non-traditional activities, as well as to justify the need for mountain biking trails and overall bicycling opportunities in Haywood County. McGill has helped us gather everything that we need to get this project on the ground and running. And finally, all of the plans that have been gathered over the years are now coming to fruition. The, the bike park will primarily consist of a pump track with skills building and beginner courses, natural service trails for walkers or bikers, observation areas, a playground, a food truck area with associated parking, as well as a building that will include ADA-accessible restrooms, storage, office spaces and a large pavilion. And soon, Site Development Corporation and Vila Solutions, also referred to as American Ramp Company, will begin to work, will begin to break ground on the bike park this summer and fall. Site Development Corporation is coming in this May to start the erosion plan. And they plan to be done by July first, that Vila Solutions can come in and start work on our pump track. That should take them about ten weeks and after which, during which, we'll be finding a general contractor to finish the base amenities and hopefully have the bike park ready for a soft start next spring. All right. Oh, that was the one I needed to go to, sorry. The funding from this project originally was made possible when the Board of County Commissioners agreed to use five hundred thousand dollars of county funds to be used as a match for the five hundred thousand North Carolina Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, or Part of Grant. And following this, the county was awarded a one-time a hundred and fifty thousand dollar Product Development Fund Grant from the Haywood County Tourism Development Authority. We also received the North Carolina Recreational Trails Program Grant in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. And we also have many private sponsors to thank and they will be able to be publicly honored soon. Many of our larger amenities in the park will be named after these sponsors. So, what I just discussed encompasses a lot of our first phase. This includes the Part of Grant requirements with all of the amenities that I just discussed, with the pump track, the playground, paving, pavilion. But we're really looking forward to now is our, our second phase, which will include three to four miles of backcountry bicycling trails, natural service trails and our donor tree. And after the second phase, we really look forward to, you know, making it more beautiful and really honing in on some great programming over there. These are a few different pictures of our planned layout for the pump track, if you guys can see it. It's going to be very incredible. You can see all of the viewing options on the side. And a lot of these, like skills courses, the actual objects on them can have marketing for our sponsors to be advertised on, on the outside. And then you can see the parking area and playground over there, which will be connected to our pavilion area. Alrighty, so as you guys know, it was originally supposed to be called the Francis Farm Bike Park in idea generation. But when they got down to it, they really wanted something more unique and something to develop our identity. You know, you think of the mountains like Chestnut Mountain or Fire Mountain. You go out to biking groups and everyone just refers to it as Chestnut or Fire. And so, having a really catchy name like Raccoon Creek is really gonna be great for our marketing and word of mouth. And these two logos are the ones that were created for our branding. And the colors go along with our recreation logo as well. And our mascot name was named by a wonderful Junealiska Elementary student named Donovan. He is just an absolute joy. He was so excited to be able to be involved in this process and he named our mascot Rowdy. So, maybe someday in the future, we could have a mascot running around in our So maybe someday in the future, we could have a mascot running around at our events and I think Rowdy will be a perfect name for it. All right. So with the first phase being funded and ready to start development, we really are thinking about the next steps for the park. We hope to attain funds for our next phase through our public campaign. Our public campaign was developed to appeal to both the local population as well as the surrounding areas. The proposed park is an open area that was once agricultural farmland. This is why we want to call it the Grass Roots Campaign. We have several different sponsor levels, each of them allowing people to be part of the park's history. Because of this, our phrase that we've coined for the campaign is Phase Two with you. And here's a basic list of our different sponsorship levels. As you can see, they're all related to trails and each of the levels build on the last one. We'll go into these sponsorship levels in more detail in just a moment. But I wanted to talk with you to, about what you see on the benefits packages in order to help people feel that we're, there will be forever part of our history. We really wanted to create a structure that will help to honor the people that have helped build this. So this is a, kind of a cartoon proof of our donor tree that we plan to have. So the inspiration behind this was that the base of the tree is the foundation holding everything together. It's the most integral part and our highest sponsor level donors will remain closer to the base with larger name plates as they're helping us build our, our foundation of community togetherness, environmental stewardship and recreational opportunity. This structure will actually be a 3D metal structure that will be placed under our pavilion and fenced around it. So it doesn't poke anyone, but it will truly be a beautiful addition and a great way to honor the people that have helped us. So you can see on our different sponsorship levels on your screens, each of them builds on the next. And even just for a hundred dollars, someone can have a certificate of appreciation. You know, when you go into pizza shops or anywhere for restaurants, they have plaques up that show that they have supported something in the community and definitely a great way to warm the heart. And then our next one will have their name listed under our website, under the trail name category and a custom trail map once the trails are finished. And then each of these, I'm sure you can just read along, they just build on each of them with better perks as you go about it. So for a thousand dollars, someone would have the exclusive right to name a trail segment or feature in our backcountry mountain biking trails. When you go up to Chestnut Mountain, a lot of the introductions to each trail have a description and then they have the sponsor for that trail with a big logo on it. And it's a really great way to honor someone who gave enough to really make it happen. And then our next one would just be, you know, prime naming rights for the most prominent trail or trail features and a story in the local media outlets. And next up, I just want to go over a possible timeline for the project. As I've discussed so far, Site Development Corporation plans to come in this month. And this month, we also hope to release this public campaign in order to start gathering funding to seriously help build Phase Two while we are waiting for Phase One to really get off the ground. And yeah, we should be finishing up construction by late fall, but always weather dependent here. So we'll just plan on a soft start by next spring. And yeah, I also just want to say a huge thank you to David Francis and my predecessor Ian Smith for getting this project off the ground. It is just incredible, everything that's been done up until this point. And I feel extremely blessed to be able to work on it at this point in the process. It's going to be a truly incredible space and just has so much potential for so much more. All right, thank you.
Well, yeah, I do appreciate it. You know, we've, sometimes we get criticized because young people don't have anything to do. And so now this has given young people a lot to do, you know, if they enjoy biking or, you know, the trails and everything. So I appreciate the focus on outdoor recreation. That's kind of what we've pivoted to. And that's what our area lends itself to because of our, you know, our mountains and everything. So, but I appreciate you just picking up the, you know, the mantle and continuing on with what we've done in the past, so. Anybody else have anything they want?
I think it is worth noting that that's also a multi-use for that property. You know, we, we, we had to go through all that state regs on putting a cap on that old landfill. And we had to acquire that property for, I guess, floodwater runoff and all that area was all part of the old Francis Farm landfill. And so it was land that the property, you know, the county already owned. It was sitting there basically with the capability of, of doing something for recreation. So I think it was very good use of, of that property that others might just consider wasted space. But it is, it would be an asset, so. And as Chairman said, you know, sometimes maybe we don't actually do enough for recreation. But I think this is a good project for that and a good use for that, that land. It was just basically laying there. Welcome aboard.
Thank you so much. Yeah, and I will say, we had some representatives from a, a mountain biking organization out there just looking at the space. And they said that it was one of the most exciting projects that they have seen in Western North Carolina. After walking through it, the opportunities for beginners and intermediates to really learn, it would just be incredible out there. So yeah, it's really exciting. Thank you.
Welcome aboard to the county.
Okay, your next presentation is the manager's recommended budget for fiscal year 2425. And we have our county manager, Brian Moorhead, here to present that.
Morning Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to present the recommended budget for the upcoming 25 fiscal year. Shouldn't be a lot of surprises in, in, in the presentation. We gave a fairly early on presentation a few weeks ago. Met with you last week, so, so you won't see a lot of surprises. Do want to thank Will Scarborough. He's, he's back at his desk watching this. He's, he spent a lot of time on, on putting the budget presentation, the budget book itself together. Think we have a good product. Thanks to Chris Boyd, who sat in on all the department meetings. Christian Owen for her guidance through the process. And we had Don Ramsey, who's interning with us while he's at Western, working on a graduate degree, who sat in on all the meetings as well. Our department heads did a great job with, with requests. I don't think anything was outlandish, even though in hardly any case, we're able to fund the request at 100%. But with that, I'll, I'll jump right in. Please, if you have any questions as we go through, please let me know. So this can be more conversational than me just up here rambling off numbers. We always start with, with property tax, just because that's the largest revenue stream. The current tax rate for this year is 55 cents. That's remaining unchanged for next year. 55 cents and total value of $10,262 million with a collection rate of 98.29%. That means the value of a penny on the tax rate's just over a million dollars at $1,8681. For property tax, we're experiencing, we're expecting an increase from 24 to 25 for $1,405,093 or 2.55%. The 56.5 million does include some prior year taxes. We collect taxes up to 10 years behind. Property tax by category, this is just the current year property tax. You can see that it's got four main components, the real, motor vehicle, personal and corporate. By and large, real property is, is, is the bulk of our funds. Next largest revenue stream is sales tax. We've had some really significant growth since fiscal year 20. For the upcoming year, I think FY25, and this is not just unique to Haywood County, but statewide collections are coming in at much more modest growth, growth that you would expect before COVID and all of the changes that we've seen. So we've got a 3% increase for next year. And keep in mind, this is the total amount of sales tax. Not all of that sales tax goes into our general fund. When you look at sales tax, we have some reservations for the, the school system and HCC and the county. So you can see the community college is in blue. It's an increase of about $148,000. Or I'm sorry, the, the community college increase is $95,702. The, the school system's increase is $148,000. And general fund for the county dollars is an increase of $475,000. Other taxes and license, actually, we're leaving that flat for next year. You can see the big drop from actual 23 to 24. You'll remember that we moved the TDA occupancy tax out of the general fund and moved it over to a separate fund. That's the reason for the, the, the drop. And the other taxes and license in this are trending right at budget for this year. And we didn't see anything to where we should increase that revenue for next year. A conservative approach, for sure. Two other revenues combined here, PILT, the payment in lieu of taxes we get from the federal government. We never know that number from one year to the next, but we're leaving it flat. And then the proceeds from beer and wine, not much growth there. We're leaving that one flat as well. Restricted intergovernmental, this is basically health and human services either funds, for the most part, for the DSS or for the health department side. A slight increase of $164,890 or 1.19%. Permits and fees, no change. The, the, the largest one of these are always building inspection fees. And you'll remember from FY23 to 24, we changed our fee structure. And right now, the, the trend is coming in at budget and another conservative approach for next year with no, no growth. Sales and services, an increase of $545,926 or about 10.2%. We've got an increase of EMS revenue. Remember, the board funded the convalescent program. I guess three or four meetings ago, we hired additional staff and two convalescent transport units. So we expect to generate more revenue and that's the reason for the increase, just $577,000. Investment earnings, this is really critical for us this year. We've got an increase of $1,750,000, a modest 173% increase. You can see the current year budget is a million dollars. Interest rates, when, when you're borrowing money, the high interest rates are, are really tough to handle. But when you have idle cash and we're investing it, it's, it's benefiting us greatly. And just to give you some context, in the spring of '22, we were receiving 0.5% interest through the capital trust. In April of last year, we were receiving 4.8%. And as of April 30th of this year, we were at 5.25%. So you can see for perspective, the interest we're earning on our funds is growing. And that's huge in, in to help make this budget happen. Miscellaneous revenues, not a whole lot going on there. We do have a slight decrease. We, we've had changes and a lot of this miscellaneous revolves around donations. The donations to Meals on Wheels were down last year. They're continuing to be down this year. And for next year, we also see a decrease in foster care donations, basically from $25,000 to $15,000. So those are some of the changes on that smaller revenue stream. Before we move over to expenditures, that was a, a quick review of our major revenues. But be glad to answer any questions. Go back some slides if you have any of those. If not, we'll, we'll just proceed to the expenditure side then. Not a whole lot of, of changes in the general fund as far as expenditures. Basically, we set out on this to make sure that we take care of our employees, our facilities and replace some capital. And as we go through this, please ask questions. The biggest one for this year is, is the employee compensation. We have a 2% merit and 3% COLA budgeted, total cost of about $2.2 million. You'll remember for FY24, current fiscal year, we actually did a 4% COLA and 2% merit, a total of 6% compensation. This year, we, we're targeting that 5% total. The cost of the Consumer Price Index is a little less this year than it was last year. So we think the 3% COLA is in line with, with inflation. And we've also corresponded with our neighboring counties to see what other folks in our area are doing. And everybody is, is, is at 5% or under. So I believe that we'll continue to be at market funding the employee compensation at this level. We do still have funds in for the Christmas bonus. That's usually in employees' paychecks before Black Friday. We do continue the funding of longevity and keeping 401K at 3%. Another big driver for us is the medical insurance. It's growing from $19,500 per employee per year to $20,000. It's a pretty modest increase at $500 when you look at national healthcare trends. Some of those are at 10%. I think this $500 increase per employee is, is just a little over 2.5%. So it's, it's really good. The program is, is, is performing well. And some of the wellness initiatives that we're trying to do for county employees are having an impact. So I look forward to, to continued modest increases in health insurance. And then the state is increasing the employer contribution requirement. So general employees are going from 12.85% to 13.6%. And sworn law enforcement officers going up 1% from 14.10 to 15.10. To give you some perspective, 1% costs us a little over $445,000. So this increase that the state's requiring is, is just under half a million dollars. I will mention that the COLA will be implemented the first full pay period in July. And the merit is always recognized on the anniversary date of the employee. This budget did have new positions requested, 18 total. And you can see there are zero new positions approved or recommended in this budget. They came from all over the county and you can, you can see the need. And this is the third or fourth straight year that there has not been increases in the budget as, as presented. Health insurance, touched on that. You can see the adopted amount for this year is going up a total of $587,000. And you'll see a slight drop in retiree costs that's just trending in that direction, which is, is overall a benefit. Just gives you another idea of health insurance. You can see it was pretty steep from, from '18 to '19. It was growing really, really quickly. The Board of Commissioners then moved our provider over to Aetna. And while it has continued to increase, it's been a much smoother, slower trend. In the last two years, you can see it's, 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 it's really evened out. And that's, I, I keep talking about health insurance, it's just because it's such a major component of, of, of how we operate and the, the total cost for employees. Major operating increases, overall, operating is, is up $1.9 million. Education is, is $713,000 of that, the school system. This funds the, the funding formula at $597,000. And HCC, it's an increase of 3.5% at $115,000. Keep in mind that that is about half of the increase that HCC requested. But I think it does give them funds to operate. Certainly, it doesn't feel like it's putting them in a corner where they can't operate for the upcoming year. IT is, is, costs are increasing and a lot of it is planned obsolescence. For instance, the control panel replacement on all of the doors, we have to replace those countywide. The useful life of this is about 10 or 12 years. So this is not a recurring cost. It's $613,000. We also have replacement of our cameras and our video, video recording system at $152,000. And then VMware, that is the, the ability for us to remote work. And as we are trying to change as an employer, offer And as we are trying to change as an employer, offering more flexible approaches to work, we have to have some way that, that if I'm working from home, I can remote in to, uh, get into all the documents and servers that we have. We also have increased costs for revow. This is in the tax assessor's office. You'll know, revow values will be established on January first of twenty-five, so Judy and her folks are diligently working on that. We need about a hundred and twelve thousand dollars more for next year. And the state made a change to DMV fees. Uh, you may remember, the state, uh, collects the vehicle tax and then sends us the, the, what they collect, less a transaction fee. They've increased that fee, and we expect another eighty-five thousand dollars a year in, in costs from, from that. Just to dig into the schools and the college a little bit, so you can see, uh, the school system, total budget's just under eighteen million. Uh, capital is held relatively flat at one million two hundred and fifty thousand, and debt at one million, uh, seven sixty-six. Keep in mind that, that the sales tax I mentioned earlier pays for both the capital and the debt for, uh, the school system. Community college, operating's at three million four twenty-eight, uh, capital at seven fifty, and debt at one million five seventy-five. And just like, uh, the school system, it's the sales tax that's reserved, Article forty-six in this case, for the community college that pays for the debt and capital. So for current year, in twenty-four, we replaced twenty-eight vehicles. Next year, we have sixteen vehicles that meet our replacement criteria. This board has really purchased a lot of our rolling stock over the last few years, and I, I'm hesitant to say, but I hope that FY twenty-five, being at sixteen vehi- vehicles is, is, is more typical going forward. We, we spent the last few years really getting caught up on vehicles. Now we're in, in a much better place. I will mention, patrol cars will continue to be an issue. Dodge, uh, has, no longer has the Charger, so we have to move to probably an SUV of some fashion, uh, be it an Explorer or a Durango. Those are much more than a sedan, uh, so while we may be buying less vehicles as we stay on our replacement schedule, the cost per vehicle and all of the equipment in it has, has grown. But a decrease, uh, six hundred and fifty-eight thousand five ninety-one. You'll see that, um, trying to see without glasses and with glasses, uh, we have, in emergency services, we have two remounts of ambulances. I believe over the last three or four years, the Board has bought, I believe, ten ambulances, not counting the convalescent, uh, vehicles. So by the time all of those come in, we should be in good shape, and the, the remount is buying a chassis and putting the box, if you will, on a new chassis instead of a full-blown, uh, chassis and box. So, uh, we, we've got funds in there for EMS vehicles. Capital projects, uh, there's, there's not a lot of capital in this, this budget. Part of it is, we, we're trying to, to, to safeguard ourselves financially, but also, we have done a lot of capital projects over the last few years. Ellie was just here talking about the bike park, uh, pickleball is on the, the agenda later on. We've got the Armory Project, uh, Phase One, that has finished up. David's talked about Phase Two coming along. Uh, we have the EMS base on Russ Avenue. We did some changes to the house at Sim Circle for EMS. We have the Waynesville Library roof replacement that the Board put into work a few meetings ago. Uh, we have courthouse, uh, elevator replacements, uh, scheduled, and we did the data room, HVAC equipment, uh, at a few meetings ago. So while there's not a lot of capital in this budget, you can see, we've got multiple projects going, and that doesn't include EWP, uh, Phase Two that's, uh, currently out for bid, uh, and we have the NCore project. So, uh, while there's not a lot of new capital initiatives, I hope you understand, there's a lot of projects going on that's going to be with us for the next few years. And then, uh, jail expansion, I should have mentioned, that was the big one, uh, that the, it's currently underway, and then remember, that's a twenty-four month build. But we do have some HVAC equipment for the Law Enforcement Center, and we also have a small replacement system in this building, uh, downstairs for fifty-five thousand. Talking about debt, I, I think it's always good to look at, look at the, uh, the, the debt model. You can see, in FY twenty-five, we're at two point eight, next year it jumps up to three point four. While we have old debt dropping off, next year is the first full year of principal and interest payments for the jail expansion. That's causing that bump for next year. The school system actually has a balloon payment next year, and you can see how quickly their dr- debt drops off. And, and, and again, uh, the school debt is paid for out of their sales tax proceeds. Community college, their debt profile is, is similar. It continues to drop off, uh, significantly over the next few years. And I guess the, the outline here is to draw focus to what we'll be working on. With revow coming up, we can't get past the fact that the natural cost of doing business is increasing quicker than the natural revenue growth, especially if we go back to sales tax and property tax growth, l- like its plan this year. So that's something that we'll keep an eye on as we work through the FY twenty-five budget and we start, you know, we're, we're not even finished with the twenty-five budget, and I'm focusing on the twenty-six budget, because I think, at that time, we'll have to start addressing some of the workload as we see growth coming into the county. I think some estimates said that from twenty twenty to twenty thirty, we may grow at nine and a half percent, uh, through some state resources, so as growth comes, the workload of our employees continues to increase, so we're, we'll monitor that for FY twenty-five. You can tell, um, we'll also have, uh, jail operating. That won't be in twenty-six, but in twenty-seven, once the new, uh, jail gets, or the, the expansion gets completed, we will have to operate it and staff it, so we'll have those additional operating costs. And, and lastly, uh, the library renovation construction. That's one of the bigger projects that we haven't got to. Uh, there's, there's funds that, uh, are currently underway for the roof replacement and some, uh, facility upgrades at the Canton Library. As far as restrooms, we've got a door project for the main, but at some point, that facility's going to need, uh, a thorough renovation or new construction. Cost estimates from twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen were, uh, I think, eight million dollars. It would be tough in this climate to, uh, do a renovation for those figures. So we'll work on those and, and, uh, have, have more information to share with you. Any questions on, on kind of the expenditure side?
Brian, I was wondering, you'd mentioned under employee healthcare, that we'd done some programs. Can you just touch on those?
Sure.
That we did to try to keep in- insurance costs down?
Yeah, we, we've had some, uh, wellness initiatives, uh, probably the, the, the biggest impact i- is doing a yearly biometric screening, where we have a couple of days, uh, contractor comes in and, and, and all voluntary, uh, employees can go in and, and kind of get that biometric screening to know your numbers, and then what they do with it, hopefully, we, we link them if they don't have a primary care doctor, so that they can go over, uh, that with their doctor. We have some nutritional services, consultation. If, if you go through the biometric screening, you're eligible for up to three visits with a nutritionist. Uh, we've got some, uh, employee, um, uh, yoga. We've got employee, uh, walking challenges. We've got, uh, EAP for mental health, and, and we also have, uh, responder services, who's working with EMS, the Sheriff's Office, and, uh, the folks at, uh, Health and Human Services. So we're trying to, to serve the employee, not just financially, making sure that we pay them and keep their insurance, but to, that they have resources to make their lives better. Those are the, the big things we're working on.
Uh, the last time that we had one of those, I, I think there were several people that caught some things that they normally wouldn't have and possibly even saved their life.
I, I, I know of several, uh, that, that went through, uh, the screening, picked up something, and, and they had a procedure that, y- you're exactly right. If, if it didn't save their li- life, it, it sure did make it a lot better. So we'll go over this just kind of from a, a, a larger view. The, the general fund is increasing just under six million dollars, uh, from a hundred million, uh, to one oh six. And you can see, by function area, this is, uh, typically where the funds go, at a, a million five to public safety, central services, a million two, but that's where we have IT and, uh, facilities, and those initiatives for capital and, and those things I just talked about are in there. Uh, debt is up just a little over one point one million. This is the interest-only payment on the expansion. You can see, Health and Human Services is up nine hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, uh, General Government five sixty-two, this public school system, five five five, Cultural and Recreation, a hundred and thirty thousand, Community College, a hundred and fifteen thousand, and so on. Uh, just a different look of how the six million dollar growth is, uh, budgeted. If we look at it along, uh, classification on where that goes, three point seven of the six million dollars is for salaries and benefits. That meets our commitment to the five percent, or three percent COLA, two percent merit. Operating increases, again, of one point nine million. That includes the schools and the college. Capital and capital outlay, it's a decrease. That's mainly because we've taken care of so much of the capital in the last couple of years, but also we're buying less vehicles. Debt's up, but that's related to the jail. I will say that the fund balance number needed to balance is a little over six point eight million dollars. In current year budget, we started out at five point one million dollars, and my goal was to actually get us below that five point one. Uh, and I think, when you start controlling for the one point one million dollars for the jail debt, and then the one-time cost for IT based on equipment replacement, I think we've done that. Uh, six point eight is, is a lot of money, but we've taken a fine, a very conservative approach to our revenue estimates. We will continue to monitor expenditures throughout the fiscal year and try to, to use as, as little of that six point eight million as, as we can. That's been our approach for many years. It's served us well, and that's, that's sort of the approach that we'll take for this twenty-five. I will say, the budget doesn't have what people say would be fluff. I really call it flexibility. We've taken a lot of the flexibility out because we are just funding employees' pay and insurance and debt. Uh, there's not much operating for the county, county side, especially if you back out the schools and the college, and one-time equipment. So this budget is, meets our needs, but it, it, it really is a status quo budget. We haven't added a whole lot of, of, of changes to it. That is, is my presentation for the general fund. I do need to go over the other funds, because, uh, as I count them, we have fifty-six other funds that I, I need to share with you, um, but, uh, maybe it's not that many, but it feels like it.
Okay, Brian, I was wondering, um, so the PACTIV Evergreen closing, how did that impact our budget?
Currently, we have the, the, the total value of, of what PACTIV value is listed as in the budget. That's something that Judy and I talked about as we were developing this, and we know that, that PACTIV is likely to take us to the, to the Property Tax Commission, uh, but right now, our, our folks do a good job of listing values, and that's the value that we have in the budget. Other funds, uh, Fund Fifteen is our health insurance fund. It's at one, it's, it's at fourteen point one million dollars, an increase of three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Fund Sixteen is our workers' comp fund. That's where we pay any of our workers' comp claims. We've got an increase of ten thousand three hundred, uh, in, in that, uh, fund. Separation allowance, this is for the, uh, sworn law enforcement officers upon retirement. It's remaining unchanged at sixty-five thousand. Uh, Fund Twenty-three is our E nine-one-one fund, a total of four hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, an increase of two hundred and seventy-four thousand. Keep in mind, this is, uh, funded by those nine-one-one, uh, surcharge funds that come back to us from the state, but the increase is really taking care of replacement of capital items, computers, uh, and, and maintenance costs. Fund Twenty-four is a solid waste fund. It's an increase of five hundred and fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-six. There's no change to any of the revenue streams for that fund, but we do have increase in repairs, maintenance, uh, replacement of a vehicle, some site funds for the convenience centers, and MRF, uh, to, to do a good job of maintaining those facilities. Fund Thirty-One, this is the Haywood County Schools Debt Fund. We have a total of five mil- five million one oh five. It's an increase of a hundred and forty-eight thousand seven eighteen. There's a little bit of, of nuance to this, because those funds are segregated by state statute for sales tax. We put the full amount of sales tax in this fund, so while it's an increase of a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, their debt payments are actually dropping for next year. But this is how we segregate those funds, uh, for proper accounting. Same thing, to a lesser degree, for the community college. It's an increase of three, it's a, a total budget of three point six eight million dollars, an increase of ninety thousand three seventy-five. Fund Sixty is the register of D's recording fees. You may remember that this was a, a change that we had to make a few years ago. So that's sixty-one thousand dollars, there's no change there. Funds and forfeitures that goes to the school system, it's three hundred and fifty thousand, uh, no change there. Representative payee, uh, no change there, and those three had traditionally just been passed through accounts that we now have separate funds for. Uh, the big one is occupancy tax at three point five million. That's an increase of five hundred and fifty thousand. Keep in mind, that's all funded by that occupancy tax, and that's a separate fund now. Road District Fund, uh, and we've got two districts requesting increases. Maggie Valley from nineteen cents to twenty cents, and Norman Road from twenty cents to twenty-five cents. Uh, to give you some context, a penny for Maggie Valley is worth nine thousand nine hundred and nine dollars, and Norman Road, a penny is five hundred and fifty-one dollars. While it's a nickel increase for Norman Road, it's just over twenty-five hundred dollars. Fire District Fund, it's six million, five fifteen. Uh, there are two, one, there's one, uh, district requesting an increase, and that's Center Pigeon, from eight and a half to nine and a half. We'll ask Chief Pless to be here, uh, to talk about that. Uh, I will mention, we're still waiting on Waynesville's, uh, request. We haven't received that one, so we'll make sure that before we have the public hearing, that we have Waynesville's. And Lake Logan had, did send an email to me on the second, saying that there's no change in the rate. They're already at ten cents, but they have not had their public meeting yet. So I've asked, uh, the folks at Lake Logan when the meeting's scheduled, so we, we know that they're in compliance, uh, with the rules established by the Board of Commissioners.
Aren't they supposed to put that in the paper?
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
Okay, and I also wanted to say, on the fire districts and the road districts, they have their own public hearings for their respective, uh, well, they're supposed to have their public meeting, like you just said, and Lake Logan needs to have that if they don't, so, but they're required to do that by statute, so, um, and that's not our rule, that's the state's rule, so, and for good reason. But anyway, I just wanted to mention that th- these districts, where they're having these increases, have their own meetings where you can voice, uh, or find out why those things are happening.
Okay. June Oluska Sanitary District, uh, that, they are requesting an increase from six to ten cents. Um, since, since I've been here, uh, this is the first request by June Oluska, and Josh Nickel with JSD will be here for the public hearing on the twentieth, uh, if there are any questions. As always, uh, the budget is available for public inspection. We have a copy there that, uh, the clerks can hand out if anybody's interested. Uh, we have a copy that Kathy will have at the main library, uh, sometime this afternoon, and about two o'clock, uh, today, the, uh, budget will be on our website for those folks that want to, uh, to review it. So, uh, if the Board so chooses, I'd like to have the public hearing on the twentieth, as Chairman mentioned earlier, at five thirty, uh, at the regular meeting. We'll have that, uh, notice published in, this week, uh, in the mountaineer, and hopefully, if everything goes well, you can consider adoption on June third. Uh, we could kick it out a couple of weeks if we, if, if needed, uh, work sessions and things like that, but that's the schedule, as we currently have it outlined, Mr. Chairman. Be glad to answer any questions, uh, if you have.
Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Chairman? I, I just wanted to say, too, we have all met with you for hours, uh, so...
Basically, two hours each try.
Yeah. So... Yeah, so the reason we don't have a lot of questions is because they've already been answered, but just want to let everybody know that, that we're not just taking this budget. I mean, we basically had back and forth during your presentation to us individually. We haven't met as a group. We met, I guess, individually or in twos so that he could go over that with us, so...
I've not got a question, but I just want to thank you for, we sat through them meetings. People don't realize how many hours and how much time you put into this stuff, but y'all did a real good job on it, and I want to thank Will and you and Chris and everybody that put this together because that was a whole lot of work.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I know you didn't say a whole lot about it, but you're presenting a budget with no requested tax increase. You're going to stay at 55 cents.
Yes.
That's what we talked about. I know that kind of gets, that kind of got lost in the shuffle over the last 45 minutes, I guess, but that's what a lot of people listen for. And we've had a healthy fund balance, and you've utilized some of that to get where we are. Of course, the interest rates, inflation, I guess, in this case is a two-edged sword. It benefited us greatly by the revenue from our investment return. And as you said, as, you know, we sat in these meetings individually, and it was huge to be able to get us where we are now without proposing a tax increase. So that is a luxury that we've had. And so I know some of the other governing boards in the county have not been so fortunate. And I think it's through conservative expenditures and conservative investment that we were able to get to this point.
I should have mentioned, you sparked a memory. We've already reduced department requests by about $4.5 million to get to this point, so there was quite a bit of work to make those reductions.
A couple of weeks ago, when was that meeting? We had the district meeting, maybe two weeks ago? Myself and fellow commissioners were invited to the, I guess, our District 17 North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, and folks like ourselves from other counties, you were there as well, and Chris and some other people. You know, they all, we all had an opportunity to discuss what was good and bad in our counties. And I left there really with a sense of relief, and so I joined in with Commissioner Ramey about the work that you put into it, having good leadership, conservative vision for the future, keeping taxes level. Hearing some of those other commissioners, it is amazing how, not to say anything derogatory about any of the other counties that surround us or nearby us, but we are really in good shape in Haywood County. And that is because of good leadership and paying attention to the future and watching the dollar and being, I don't want to say tight with the budget, but definitely paying attention to expenditure. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, it could be way worse.
Just to add to what the other commissioners said, thank you for the work, Brian and the rest of the staff. And I know one of the goals of all of us commissioners is to take care of our employees. And I know that we're not allowing any more additions, as you've already mentioned, but I think the goal is to take care of the employees that we have, looking, you know, at possibly working from home, doing the three and two on the increases. And then also with the insurance, I know that we had discussed that, you know, our insurance costs continue to rise. I believe we've maintained or held the costs to the employees, and I know you spoke of that earlier. So I just want to be sure that our employees know that we are trying to look after them and take care of them. So I don't know if you want to speak to that any, but as I know that, and we all know that our costs have continued to go up, but we've tried to maintain their costs.
We're very fortunate that this board funded a pay and classification study several years ago, and we beat a lot of our competitors, the other counties and folks for our employees, and we're in pretty good shape. We don't lose a lot of employees to pay. Now, that's not universal, of course, but we're in much better shape than we would have been if you hadn't done that. And later this week, actually, there's another pay and classification study about to start. They're going to spend the rest of this calendar year working on that study so we can actually roll it out sometime in FY '26. Now, when we did it in '22, FY '22, we were very far off market, but it had been almost 20 years since we had done a study. Getting it on this four-year cycle keeps us closer to the market, and I don't expect anywhere near the results that we had from the last one. I think in some key positions, you'll see significant changes, but for the most part, I think we're in really good shape. Back to the health insurance, Chris was telling me, he thinks it's at least 24 years since we've had an increase on the employee cost. It's almost unheard of. I'm not sure anybody else in the state could say they haven't had an increase for the employee or their family in 24 years. At some point, we'll have to adjust that. It's just, it's odd, but also, when our wages weren't at market, that was one of the only recruiting and retaining options we had, is that we have really good health insurance. So we'll work on those things over '25 and have something in '26 to work on probably. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Brian. Okay, our next order of business is discussion or adjustment to the agenda, but I don't have anything. Does any of the other commissioners have anything? Okay, and then after that is our consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions on the six items on the consent agenda?
Just to comment on item three, you know, those are funds, kind of pass-through funds from state. Representative Pless got, am I correct, Brian, $4 million for economic development, and in conjunction with Pactive Evergreen closing down, this helps the railroad issue and some other operating issues that they had. So I think it's very well appropriation of those funds that came from Representative Pless that handed them down to us. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so hearing nothing else, I'll entertain a motion. Will you approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone oppose? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, next order of business is regular agenda, and the first item is to request approval to award a proposed based, a proposal based on the request for qualifications, RFQ, selections to McGill and Associates for Design and Engineering Services in the amount of $173,200 for the Raccoon Creek Bike Park, and our community and economic development director, David Francis, and McGill vice president, Mark Cathy, will be here today to present that.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. The, Ellie did a great job of laying out Francis Farm Bike Park now, Raccoon Creek Bike Park. We've had a good time. You know, we first started calling the Raccoon Rocky and now Rowdy, and so it's been a good to see how this has developed over time, and you know, it's going to, like, again, I'm so excited about this addition and this amenity to our community. Commissioners, if you all recall from last year, Ian Smith was up here discussing the bike park as well. It was, we discussed at that point in time, we discussed about American Ramp Company and VLO Solutions building the pump track. At that time, we awarded the contract for them to build the pump track. But also, you know, as you heard, there's, you know, different amenities out there. There's pavilion with restrooms, you know, additional trails, playground, you know, place of the grinning tree. And one of the things that we're excited about as well, too, is there's going to be an area there for food trucks when we have events and, you know, different competition or we can have other different events out there, so there's room for that. So we still need, you know, engineering services to accomplish that as well. So part of that is, you know, this contract is designing that pavilion and the restroom. The bike park is in the town of Waynesville's extraterritorial jurisdiction, so we have to have some of those approvals done there for the town of Waynesville to bless that part of the aspect of the construction phase. So with that, McGill has been working, as mentioned, you know, they took this concept from two years ago and have been working towards this. So this is, you know, again, a culmination of all this two years of work. McGill, when we were putting budgets together and things, they were nice enough to reduce their fees and became a bike sponsor as well, too. So before you, that is the approval for the construction or for the engineering and design services of the building and the construction management of the project.
Do I have any questions?
Yep, questions?
Mark here? Okay. Did you want to say anything, Mark?
I do not have anything formal. David has kind of laid it out there, and Ellie's laid out the specifics and showed you. So basically, what we would begin to work with with this contract now would be the site design, the building design, and which would include, you know, several of the amenities, the mechanical, electrical, plumbing that would be associated with the site lighting, associated with the food trucks and that kind of thing. And all of that would, that would be next. It would be a series of, you know, basically to get it to workshops, to get it to 60% design, then we would complete it with all our permitting, all of the smittles to the town of Waynesville, obviously water and sewer services, all those things that have to occur to serve the facility. So that's pretty much all I have relative to the overall description, but, you know, I'm glad to answer any specific questions relative to the proposal, if you have it.
So y'all are ready to jump on this, I guess, too, right? I mean, if it's approved?
Yes. Matter of fact, there was, I was cheating, looking at emails here a minute ago, and proposing a meeting at 5:00 today with the architect to start talking about the layout of the building they were asking, inquiring.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Okay. Thank you very much.
It did really nice to see Mark in other than a golf shirt. That's really kind of, that's kind of amazing to me, you know, so I was surprised to see that today. He said, you know, McGill's been fantastic, you know, because, you know, there's been a lot of leaning on, you know, Mark and Scott Morrell, you know, for to get this project, and, you know, they've had experience with other, not exactly bike parks, but with other, you know, rec amenities, pavilions and things like that. So we've been able, you know, to use some of their past, you know, buildings that they've designed, you know, for this as well, too. So that's helped save us some money.
Okay, great. Okay, so am I having questions? Okay, I know you're on the recreation community, Brian. Did you have anything?
Okay, just exciting to see this project, you know, come alive. I've made this comment before, I'm a football guy, baseball, you know, out, you know, outdoors, but not necessarily, you know, what you'd think of here in the mountains as far as the hiking and floating down the river and bike parks and stuff like that. But it is exciting to see this, you know, the more I've learned about this bike project, there is a ton of interest, you know, especially from outside the county. It's going to bring a lot of revenue to the county. And not only that, as you pointed out before, we've got a lot of folks that may not necessarily like the footballs and stuff, that enjoy things like the bike park, so it's going to give our younger generations. And I drive by that Chestnut Park every day, just about it, and you go by there and see the parking lot's full. I mean, every time it's open. And so you see what kind of impact it can have. So it's just exciting being a part of the rec board right now and knowing that we're focusing on a, or targeting at a different group of people and...
Okay, so I'll go ahead and ask for a motion to approve item one of the regular agenda.
I'll make that motion.
One second. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone oppose? Okay.
Just one other comment, you know, Mr. Rogers, you know, hunting is also a form of hiking, too, so...
I didn't realize that, but now that you mention that, that's very interesting. Hunting and fishing.
I was talking to my brother yesterday, and he said, he said, hunting in the mountains is hard, and that's why everybody goes to South Carolina.
Right, right. Thank you for explaining that. I've wondered why they all head south and everywhere else to go.
But when I was a kid, I didn't have that, so I went, yeah, it was a hike, that's for sure.
Do that when you're young, as older you get, you go the flat ones.
You go to the flat country, yeah. Okay, okay. So you're up again. Item two is approval of a memorandum of understanding, or a MOU, with Lake June Oluska Assembly in the amount of $290,000 to implement a six pickleball courts and renovation of the public restroom facilities located at Memory Lane, Lake June Oluska Assembly. And of course, David's here to present, as well as Lake June Oluska's executive director, Ken Howe. Good to have you here this morning, Ken.
Let me bring you up to speed, you know, since the last time we were discussing this. You know, we had slotted the pickleball courts, you know, for the Allen's Creek Park. Last year, we had a bid opening, and there's more, you know, there's much more people here than there was that day. We had no bidders that showed up when we put this out to bid for Allen's Creek Park. We did a second bid, we had one bidder for that, and it was way over budget. And one of my terms, my least favorite terms is value engineering, and we couldn't value engineer it down far enough to get it into budget. We tried, but we were unsuccessful about doing that. We were going to try again this spring, you know, for another round of bidding. Luckily, at that time, you know, Ken approached me about the possibility of the pickleball courts coming down to the Lake June Oluska Assembly area, and we had been discussing that for a number of weeks. And since that time, we have developed a memorandum of understanding that the county would furnish the funds to build six pickleball courts. That'll give us a total of 10 pickleball courts down there on the Lake June Oluska grounds. So when we've been, in the past, we're talking about having tournaments and having, you know, having that type of activity there, not just, you know, when people can go play in recreational, but we'll also have tournaments. Ken found some data to share with me as well, that, you know, these tournaments, you know, with 10 courts could bring about, you know, $82,000 in an event into the county. So the things, we've talked about our recreation, you know, aspect, but it's also an economic development drivers as well, too. So I think this was a good public-private partnership. As, you know, Chairman, you know that we are fans of doing those when we can, and this is another good example of how the county and private sector is working together to make a great amenity for our community. The, you know, Brandon does serve on the Recreation Advisory Committee. This matter came up twice to the committee, and that was, it was unanimously approved both times. Also, part of this is that funds will also be used to renovate the bathrooms adjacent to the courts, you know, for, you know, as we've all been there, you know, these, the lake grounds are open to the public. You know, I walk there, Mr. Ramey walks there, I know Mr. Long and Mr. Moorhead had, you know, had a lunch meeting there, walking around the lake. It's such, you know, Lake June Oluska grounds are such a, you know, important part to our community. When we have economic development folks that come in and visit our areas, this is one of the first places they go, and the hospitality that they receive while they're here, and people come, you know, just blown away by, you know, that this is right in our county and our community, and it's free. And, you know, Ken's been very passionate about how he, you know, interacts with the community, and he's been very, you know, this is one of, something he wanted to see us get done, and I'm really appreciative of Ken and the work you've done to help us get this far. So as you see in there, so the $209,000 calls the six pickleball courts and the renovation of the bathrooms. So any questions? Mr. Howe?
I might have missed it, Dave, but have y'all been, has this been bid yet?
It was bid last year.
I know that, you said that, but I mean, has this new facility been bid?
Yes, yes. It's part of your attachment there with Mr. Clapp from Baseline Sports Construction. Part of that, you see the bid in there for the $190,000 to renovate the tennis courts there. Up on the screen, you'll see the courts that are proposed. On the left side of the screen is the courts that will be renovated or to... On the left side of the screen is the courts that will be renovated over to the six pickleball courts. And then just across the street where the forty-seven is, is the bathrooms that would be renovated. And this is a reference, that's the pool, Lake Geno Luska Pool there on the memory. Yeah. So, yeah, so Ken received two bids for this project. It's been hard to get, you know, some of these guys are super busy right now, so but this, you know, was a bid was was much lower than the bid that we received to build Allen's Creek.
Exactly. Well, you know, it's interesting, so Thursday, you know, we had the National Day of Prayer, and Lake Geno Luska always has a has an event there and or has started having an event there every year. And so I was leaving that event, and so I was driving by the tennis courts, and they were playing pickleball on the tennis courts. So people are already doing pickleball instead of tennis on the tennis court. So we're going to revamp those.
Correct.
To and then then we'll have the pickleball court, the official size pickleball court instead of trying to play on.
And Ken can talk about, you know, some of the things that already, you know, they're working there to make that area, they're putting in cornhole, permanent cornhole boards, shuffleboard. So they've started some work there, and this is going to be just a great additional and nicer amenity to go along with the renovations that are happening right there as well.
Do you want to say anything, Ken? Not really?
Just just thank you, thank you, David, for working with us on this. Also, Bryant, we deeply appreciate y'all's work on exploring this together. It is, as David said earlier, a great example of a of a private and public partnership. We're so thankful at Lake Geno Luska that we are a place that Haywood County can come to. Again, it is unique that we are private property, a religious faith-based, not-for-profit, and bring people in. We do see recreation, though, and people coming and enjoying recreation as an important part of what we do, and always glad to see people there on the grounds and eager for this project to move forward. It it is a win-win for for everybody involved.
Just to comment, you know, we're going from six courts to ten for less money. We're engaging in a public-private partnership. And by the way, the the private partnerships served the county well my whole lifetime, you know, prior to you arriving in the county. I mean, the the assembly grounds, as far as public recreation or physical health initiatives, your walking track has always been available to the public, a lot of people utilize that. And it's a central location, it's kind of a in the middle of everything. So this, when I heard, when I first heard this, I thought, wow, this is kind of a home run, you know, for everybody, because and I've heard people say about pickleball. My my son, his wife are in a young married sons' school class at a local church, and they had a social last Saturday, and he came back and said, Dad, have you ever played pickleball? And I said, sorry, I I haven't. He said, you've got to try that. He said, they they did that with their group, and it was just a huge, huge hit. So I haven't engaged in a game of pickleball yet, but it may be coming soon. But but anyway, I just appreciate the cooperation between these entities and, you know, the assembly's always been a friend, Haywood County, and in various respects, so appreciate that. And David may have mentioned lunchtime meetings. County manager and I, sometimes we work in a commissioner, county manager meeting while walking around the lake, and you'd be surprised how clearly you can think and be open with discussions about issues within the county. And, you know, so it's if you see two guys walking around there talking and throwing their arms around, it's probably it may be me and county manager, because that's that's kind of my my preference place to to meet, you know, instead of sitting in an office. We we have a a walk-in meeting about things and but I appreciate I appreciate the cooperative cooperative effort here, and it's just, again, a win-win. You get more bang for your buck, it's more accessible, it's it's just great, so thank you.
And Lake Geno Luska is willing to, you know, manage the project there, and also they will be maintaining the upkeep of the courts, you know, post, so that the county will not be responsible for any of that upkeep. The in the lake is also contributing twenty percent of matching funds for the project, too.
You know, again, I've been a commissioner now, we're going on six years. This may have been the meeting that we discussed recreation more than any meeting in six years I've been sitting up here. I don't know if you guys will agree, but it's the the meeting today has centered around public recreation, recreation initiatives, and we had the big economic development initiative there in the consent agenda. So we we serve all the people of Haywood County, and this is an example of it, today's meeting and the agenda and what we're trying to strive to accomplish here, so.
You know, it's such a, you know, I appreciate you saying that, Mr. Long. You know, it was just a good balance today when we had the public hearing for the bike park. There was, you know, a few families that came and spoke about how nice it was going to be to have, you know, a place where we can take our kids and have, you know, a bike park, you know, to learn to ride and things. And then, you know, and then we go to another side, which, you know, you know, the folks, you know, more my age, sort of dominating pickleball, and, you know, and so when I've seen the pickleball players out there, and so we've, you know, taken account of wise age spectrum today of bringing these amenities and making amenities better here in our community, you know, from from a very beginner to, you know, somebody who's learning to play pickleball, who may be retired and, you know, enjoying enjoying getting out there and doing, you know, those kind of activities. When, you know, Ellie, you know, was talking about, you know, the amenities for the bike park, you know, our hikes that we offer through the recreation program, where, you know, we we serve a lot of people who are, you know, you know, fifty and above. So, you know, we we are, you know, really working about how we, you know, broad, you know, broadcast our recreation, you know, you know, plans and the things that we're doing for this community. And I'm really proud of the work I've done, and I'm very appreciative of the board's willingness and participation they they have shown over the last, you know, bit of time. Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
One other thing about funding, correct me if I'm wrong, but part of that ARPA funding, the American Rescue Plan.
Correct.
You know, again, people want to know the money.
Yeah.
And, you know, what lost in this conversation was a lot of those funds came from the American Rescue Plan, which they handed that money down to the counties, and then they told us how to spend it. We had to have a certain percentage of that earmarked for recreation. You know, so this was this was big for us to be able to to utilize those federal funds that came through the ARPA funding. Am I correct about that, county manager?
Yeah, we I'd have to go back and we did use some ARPA funds, and then the bike park had the state part of grant, so.
State park grants on the bikes, but on the on the pickleball.
Yeah, ARPA funds were for the bike park, and the the part of funds are for the bike park, yeah.
Okay.
But I don't remember if the pickleball exactly.
If I could.
It was.
Pickleball, too.
Thank you, Christian, I think you and I are the only two that remember that.
The voice of reason over here says.
The conversation just a little bit. When the vote first came on back on the ARPA funds, and I want to say that I'm excited about seeing this back on the agenda today. I talked to Mr. Howell earlier. I was the sole vote that voted against pickleball. And my reason behind that was I was just not confident that it was our best project. And so I feel like now skipping ahead a couple of years, that this really checks all of the boxes. It is, you know, if you want to talk about location, it is an ideal location. It is a public and private partnership. There are established groups of pickleball players that already, and they're very passionate about it. And so I think when we vote for or against something as commissioners, it's important to be able to discuss why we have the opinions that we have, and that was the reason that I voted so strongly against it the first time. This time, I was also a little hesitant when it was first brought back to the agenda, and I wanted to make sure that we were presenting a project that was going to be what's best for the community. And with, you know, anytime we have a new program or we have a new something that we build or create, we have to look to the future and how it's going to cost us to maintain it and staff it. And this program helps us to avoid that. The lake is going to pick it up, and they'll be taking care of that. We all visit the lake and walk and use those restrooms, and they certainly could use an improvement. And so it's going to be a really good thing for everybody. So I just wanted to step out there and say I was the sole vote that voted against it the first time, but am very much in favor of it this time, and it's because it is just a better program. So I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Thank you. Thank you.
Would you like to challenge, you and I maybe?
That's the other thing.
Challenge Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Ramey.
Actually, Commissioner Long and I had our budget meeting together, and at that we decided that it might be fair for he and I to challenge some of my other, our other commissioners to, I guess, when you open it or something, we should, I mean, how bad can it be?
Oh. Oh, just wait.
I play to win.
I'm more excited.
I play to win, and you know, I think you'll be on the winning team. I know Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Ramey may have some input, but we might want to challenge those two on the other end.
Let's do it.
I want to say, I the doubles I want to see is Brian and Frank as a team.
That might be better.
You got Brian on your team? Okay, okay, right.
I have I have never played in my life, so, you know, it can only go up, it can only get better.
Miss Flag just volunteered a commissioner's, you know.
Workshop.
Workshop for pickleball.
Maybe a fundraiser for a charity. Why, let's just take it another step. I mean.
I I'm against that gambling on that outcome, but if you hope to come for us, I say, pack your lunch.
Well, challenge accepted.
I'm mine, girl.
That's great. Thank you for that. I appreciate the time there. Mr. Chair, I've got one other thing. Part of your motion, we would need to have the county manager, Morehead, sign this MOU, please. It's under his signature.
Okay. So we need to add that to the motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we're we're voting on the motion that's in the packet, and then we're going to add that Brian can sign.
Mr. Chair, I think the best thing would probably be to have a motion in a second to amend the language of the agenda item to include approval for the county manager to execute related contract documentation, and then a second, a second motion in a second to approve the agenda item as amended.
Okay. All right, so the first vote will be to have to be able to amend this.
Yep.
Item on the agenda, so let's can I have a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion.
In a second. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's unanimous. So now, I'll tell you what, why don't you repeat, why don't you say what you need?
Okay, I think now you can just make a motion to approve the item as amended.
Okay, and it's amended to have Bryant say?
Execute the MOU.
Okay, execute the MOU. Okay. Okay, can I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second? Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, you want to pose? Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Appreciate you coming out, Ken.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken and Dave.
And Lake Geno Luska is, you know, they could have gates up and and make it private and just let their people be there, but they don't. They let the community participate and in 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 that, so which is a good example of Christianity, being able to share what you have. Okay. Okay, next will be, next order of business is appointments. We'll request approval for reappointment of Donald Buckner to the to the psychiatrist member position of the Health and Human Services Agency Board. Did you need to say anything?
The only thing that I'll mention is that the full HHSA board met on April sixteenth and voted unanimously to have you reappoint Mr. Buckner.
So we have our chair of that board here today. Appreciate you being here.
Okay, yeah.
Mr. Reeves?
Appreciate you being out there. Okay, so can I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, you want to pose? Okay, that concludes our business, and we don't have a closed session. So does anyone have anything else further to bring before the board?
I'll say that Dr. Buckner is definitely an asset to the HHS board. He he served served that board very well. It's, like I said, an asset to have him on that board. And I've often joked, because he is a psychiatric doctor, that being a member of this board and members of other boards that I may need his services, so it's nice to nice to keep him close, but Dr. Buckner is an asset to that board and does a great job, so just wanted to add that.
Maybe we all get to get to know.
I started saying, maybe we could all use his services.
Okay, so I have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned, everybody be safe.